All right. Hello, hello. It is not. There we go. All right. Oh, my God. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the June meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton Code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, we do have four members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. First item on our agenda is roll call Mario DeFolvio. Joe D'Angelo is absent. Chris Judgeitz is absent, but I believe he'll be joining us in a minute. Kelly Weiss. Manny Priest is absent and Kyle Nedlich here. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the last meeting. Anybody see anything in the meeting minutes that was a problem or an error? All right. And if not, is there a motion to approve? All right. Motion to approve by Kyle. Seconded by Mario. All in favor? All right, four in favor, zero opposed. All right, on to the next section of our meeting, which is seeker determinations. In this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. After all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation. And we ask that any member of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. All right. Tonight, our first seeker determination is for the applicant Eric Rundell's. Project address is 225 Shenango Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of an industrial cannabis business in an existing industrial building in the C6 Limited Neighborhood Commercial District. Is there anybody here from the 225 Shenango Street project? All right. Seeing no one. Anybody care if we table this until we'll do the other project first and then come back to this? So I'll make a motion to reorder our agenda and put 225 Shenango Street behind the 23 Henry Street project. All right, second by Kyle, all in favor? All right. Four in favor, zero opposed. All right, so that'll change our order and we'll do the first seeker determination tonight with the applicant Stephen Vasallo. Project address is 23 Henry Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit to convert the upper stories of an existing mixed-use building into a multi-unit dwelling with 12 units and 48 total bedrooms in the C2 Downtown Business District. And the microphones are a little bit wonky. Just make sure the green light is on. And some of them you have to get really close to speak into and some of them you can stay a little ways away, but.
Hi, I'm Steve Vasallo, address 9102 Whistling Swan Lane, Syracuse, Manly, New York. I brought our architect Anthony with us and he's gonna speak to the plans.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anthony Rojas from In Architects 239 East Water Street in Syracuse, New York. We're excited to present 23 Henry Street to you today. It's an existing five-story masonry building with heavy timber structure on the interior. It's a type 3B construction built in 1890, approximately 5,000 square feet per floor. Currently, there's a commercial tenant on the first floor Burger Mondays. It's an existing restaurant that will remain. There will be some upgrades done on the interior, but mostly what exists will remain there today. On the upper floors from two through five, it's currently student housing and we intend for that to remain with a similar use, with the same use. So levels two through five will remain student housing. There's currently one unit per floor and about 14 beds on each level. But we are proposing in our plans to convert the units to be three units per floor with a four or five-bed arrangement in each unit totaling 12 units throughout the building for a total of 52 beds. The project is a historic tax credit project. It's been approved by part one and we're currently in the part two process. We have made that submission and we're waiting to hear back on that status for any comments or changes from NPS. The site, the owner also owns two adjacent properties that are currently parking. And the intent is to remain parking to support this project. By our calculations, we are required, you know, 28 total spaces based on the residential use. And our parking lots are currently provide 33 spaces. The dumpster enclosure that exists will remain and will be used by both uses. There is gonna be some sidewalk work, so there's the existing utility vault in the basement that has some structural issues. We need to reduce some steel repairs down there. So we're proposing to tear up the sidewalk, replace all the structure down there, replace it in kind. And while we're doing that, we're also proposing, the building is currently inaccessible. It's not an accessible structure. There's about an eight-inch step, maybe a little less to enter that first floor level. So we're proposing to add handicap ramp because there is an elevator in the structure, so that would make all of our units handicap accessible by providing that ramp along the sidewalk. Aside from window replacements and some masonry, window replacements in kind, again, obliging by the historic tax credit regulations and doing some masonry restoration work, there really is no other exterior work proposed. Happy to field any questions?
All right, excellent. Any questions?
The staff comments?
Have not received staff comments.
I don't either.
No.
Oh.
You want me to read them?
You want to read for?
Sure.
Are you gonna come and give me yours?
Let's see, so the staff comments. There's no sidewalk along the prospect. They have frontage of the parking lot. A compliant concrete sidewalk with concrete aprons at the entrances to the parking area should be installed. And the planning commission should consider whether the layout of the parking area should be reconfigured for better vehicle circulation. The southeastern most spaces do not appear to have adequate drive aisle width. The site plan should be revised to show dimensions on the parking areas. Given the five-space surplus of parking, non-compliant spaces should be removed and replaced with landscaping where possible.
Now, could, and so because these are two separate parcels owned by a separate entity, you know, structure, the application is really solely for the 23 Henry Street. Would we be able to take any of those comments or any kind of instructions on those parcels as a separate line item, separate application process and solely deal with the building structure?
I can defer to Bob on this, but being that the parking. I try again. Being that the parking is being used to meet required parking, parking requirement. It's part of the site plan. I didn't phrase that well, but it's part, it's meeting part of the zoning requirements applicable to this application. And it was introduced with the application, so it has to be treated as such.
Sure. Understood.
We, you know, we were planning on making enhancements to that parking lot as well. The only question I would have is, you know, some of those excess spots right now are used by the restaurant and we just wanna mean, make sure that they have sufficient parking to ensure that they're able to continue their business as needed, but otherwise, we're happy to make those improvements for sure. It definitely needs it.
All right, so I think the best thing to do would be to consider that and then revise the plan for the next meeting. However you see fit or how you want to address those comments.
Is it, is it okay to, as Anthony said, there's, there's, there is no way for us to separate the two, just so we can, just because we're under a bit of a time crunch to get started on the project?
Or if it would be possible to have a conditional approval based on having that resubmitted? That'd be great. Okay, thank you.
That's what we typically do, correct? Is do a conditional? Yes, so you still have another meeting to go through. So ideally, what would happen is between now and the next meeting, you'd revise the plan, get it all up to what you're willing to do. And then we would look at it then and you wouldn't need a conditional approval. You have already adjusted the plan.
Okay.
If there were conditions at the next meeting, then yes, sometimes we do do conditional approvals. Things that you'd have to change and submit a new plan to planning department.
And would it be your? In the way we've calculated the parking, you would agree that the 28 spaces is what's required? So by providing the 33 is over? So like with the reconfiguration, if I were to lose to be able to get wider drive aisles, would that be okay if that's the target number?
Yeah, yeah, you just need to meet the 28 and the planning commission does have the authority to grant a reduction in parking up to 50%. So if you needed, for whatever reason, to lose more spaces, obviously, they would have to vote to allow it, but that would be possible without needing a variance from a different board.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, it's a good thing to talk about today. Do you need that many parking spaces or is it way more than you even need for that number of units or that?
You know, with 52 beds and again with an operating restaurant, I think in particular, and we're hoping that the restaurant continues to grow and expand and be successful, so we'll take a look at it, I think, as part of this process, but our, our experience thus far, actually even less tenants there has been, all the spots are taken.
Okay. Sounds great. Could you tell us what's going on in the basement?
So right now, the basement's going to be used primarily for storage, both restaurant storage and student storage. There'll be some caged enclosures for each individual to separate their properties. But that'll be the only uses that are down on the lower level.
All right, and no, no big open spaces that unbeknownst to you, the tenants could have parties in or?
It'll be divided up with these caged enclosures and kind of, you know, that'll be the separation. There won't be wide open spaces.
Okay. Yeah, we ask because we've been having trouble with this on other properties.
No, and we've, you know, we obviously, we've had our own issues with the current layout of the property where we have, you know, 14 beds. Definitely more conducive to that type of activity and we are very excited to break that up a little bit.
Okay. Great. I guess the only other question I had was just about the dumpster. Is there any way to hide that any better back there? I know right now it's open all the time. There's no gate on it. It's just very visible when you're walking from the stadium back down into town. It's like, yeah, right in your face.
Yeah, understood.
Just a consideration. It's only one, one opinion and just, just questioning whether something better should have done.
Sure.
Oh. All right. Any other questions, concerns? All right. All right. I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing mixed-use building, which is a type-two action and that no further environmental review is required for seeker. All right, second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, four in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at our July meeting at 5:15. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, four in favor, zero opposed. All right, so we'll see you back in July and we'll have a public hearing and see if anybody comes to talk about the project.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, so that brings us to our other seeker determination. The applicant is Eric Rundell's. The project address is 225 Shenango Street. Is anybody here from the 225 Shenango Street project?
If he doesn't come, you could schedule the public hearing. Or you could just tape it all together and schedule it in July or August, really up to the planning commission.
I guess with the no-show and only four of us here, we should, I think we should table it and yeah, yeah, make sure we do the proper review on that, yep.
Tito, does it make any, does it matter if we move it all the way to the end of the meeting just to give that much more time or?
I don't think so. It's not a public hearing that was noticed for a particular time, so.
All right. Anybody opposed if we just move it to the end and if they're still not here, then we'll table? All right, so I'll make a motion to move the 225 Shenango Street project to the very end of the meeting. Second by Kyle, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. All right, so that'll take us into our next section of our meeting, which is public hearings and final deliberations. In this portion of our meeting, we'll be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we were reviewing your information, so it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of your project to remind us what you're planning and then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving your name and address of any members of the applicant's team that are planning to speak for our public record. And anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, please also start off by stating your name and address for our records. We do limit public comment to five minutes, so please plan accordingly if you're going to speak about a project tonight. All right, so tonight, our first public hearing is for the applicant, The Metro Group Properties, Inc. Project address, project addresses are 181, 185, 187, and 205 Clinton Street, 2 and 7 Hudson Street, and 9 Slossin Ave. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a mixed-use structure with 288 dwelling units and ground floor commercial space in addition to ancillary parking in the C4 Neighborhood Commercial District and I2 Light and Medium Industrial Districts. Welcome back.
Thank you. So as a reminder, my name is Bob McCurdy with the law firm Coughlin and Gerhardt, 99 Corporate Drive in Binghamton. And we're here on behalf of the applicant and with me, I'll have everyone introduce themselves.
Hello again, Dustin Welch, architect with Passero Associates, 242 West Main Street, Rochester, New York.
Steve Sanderson with Delta Engineers, 860 Hooper Road in Henwell.
Morgan Zwirline from Delta Engineers, 860 Hooper Road.
Okay, thank you. So we gave a presentation at the last meeting in May with an overview of the project. I'll just briefly remind you, so this project is a result of the Clinton Street Neighborhood Business District Plan that was approved by the city council last year. And that plan sought to revitalize the Clinton Street corridor with economic development opportunities, additional housing, and shovel-ready projects. So this is a direct result of that plan. So what we're proposing is two five-story structures along Clinton, Jarvis, and Hudson Streets. The two structures will be connected by a courtyard area along Clinton Street. And the entire ground floor of Clinton will be reserved for commercial development, commercial uses, retail, food service, those types of establishments. The remainder of the property will be filled by one, two, and three-bedroom apartment units. The, the, the key aspect to this project is that it was designed to kind of enhance the, the living enjoyment of the residents who will be living there. So it's got an outdoor playground area for children. It's got an indoor fitness center for exclusive use of the residents. We've included a community room for functions and parties, a common laundry area, a storage room, including bicycle storage. We have EV charging stations and the courtyard is going to have benches and shade trees as well as green space adorned throughout the project and parking for over 300 spaces behind the, the two structures. We've got the rendering there on the left and on your left and then the site plan on your right, which we've walked through at the last meeting. So since the last meeting, we've responded with some additional information at your request. So one was to include on the site plan the different phasing of the project. There's gonna be a phase one and phase two that is now set forth directly on the site plan. And you also requested some lighting plan for the parking on the Slosson Street parking lot. We've included that on the site plan as well. In addition, since the last meeting, we received a shippo letter demonstrating no impact to historic or archaeological resources. And we've also provided a letter outlining the criteria for the special use permit and why we believe we meet that criterion. So other than that, the project is the same as what we presented in May. And we're certainly ready, willing, and able to respond to any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Before we open the public hearing?
Just one initial question. So I think you'd presented 292 spots last time and you mentioned there's over 300 now. Was there additional spots added or?
Can you clarify the number of spots? I think in our seeker, we had a maximum of 305, I believe, right?
Okay.
Yeah, there's parking both for the commercial along Clinton Street as well as in the rear for the residents. I'll let Steve, do you have any, any additional comments on that?
So. So this encompasses the 292 spots, which will give enough parking for all the residents to have off-street parking on the site. And then there's the additional commercial parking up here for when the phase-two building unit goes up and that retail space is there, it'll be that retail parking as well.
Thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
All right. So before we, before I have anybody move, let's open, we'll open the public hearing, but before you move, let's see if anybody's gonna come down to actually speak about the project. So, all right, this is this is the public hearing for the applicant, The Metro Group Properties, Inc. The project addresses are 181, 185, 187, and 205 Clinton Street, 2 and 7 Hudson Street, and 9 Slossin Ave. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a mixed-use structure with 288 dwelling units and ground floor commercial space. If there's anybody who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. All right, so with somebody coming down, we'll have you guys just step off to the side. Thank you.
Hi, Mark G., 249 Oak Street. My, my question is, how is it gonna be managed? Who's gonna be responsible to manage that large built, uh, structure and tenants? It seems like there's a real issue with when these, these get so large. All right. We don't have a track record of responsibility to those buildings. And anything in Binghamton isn't being managed very well. That's my problem with it.
All right. Oh, Tito asks if we could get your name one more time for the record.
Mark G.
Mark G. All right. And your address?
249 Oak.
Oak Street, okay. Uh, great. So what we'll do is we take all comments and then when the public hearing, when everybody's done speaking, we have the applicant sit back down and we'll ask them to comment on it.
Okay.
But thank you for your, your question. All right, anyone else who'd like to speak about the project? And Tito, did we get any letters submitted directly to the planning department?
We did not.
Okay. All right, so seeing nobody else approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. So if you guys come back. All right. And one excellent question, how are the buildings managed?
Yeah, it is a really good question, especially based on the track record of some other properties that, that we've seen in the city. So we've directly addressed this issue by including in the design an office for an onsite manager. So there will be somebody designated whose job it is to manage this property to troubleshoot any issues that may come up with either the residents or the, or the neighbors. He'll be managing the, the landscaping, the garbage removal, really all of the aspects of the operation of this site. The city staff will have direct access to this person, phone number and contact information. Their office will be located right on the first floor. We've got it, I think, right on Clinton Street, if I don't. Okay, so it's on the rear of the building, but it's on its first floor accessible. So it is a good question. It's something we've talked about and thought about. We felt this is a big enough project to have an onsite manager, so we included that in the plans.
All right. Great. Any other questions or comments?
There's a requirement in here for a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Has that been submitted?
That's been submitted. It's under review by the engineering department right now. Just to clarify, that'll have to be approved by the engineering department prior to permits being issued, but it does not have to be approved at this stage yet, so long as they've submitted one.
All right, do, do we still have to do conditional approvals or it's? The project wouldn't move forward if it didn't get approved, so.
Yeah, right, the, the permit is sort of the guarantee
Great.
of that. This does require a variance from the zoning board of appeals, so if you do approve this, it should be subject to the variance being granted by the zoning board of appeals. But other than that, I can't think of any other conditions.
Tito, we, we were also requesting a modification to the lot area requirement from 70 to 72% coverage. It's lot coverage.
I think that was addressed at, at the prior meeting, the, the waivers and bonuses that you were requesting, I can double check.
Okay. Yes, sir. Conditional approval, you guys still need the 2% waiver?
Correct.
Lot coverage?
Yes.
Because I, I don't see the additional 2% in the minutes, the motion made last meetings. Yeah, it was discussed, just wasn't voted on.
Okay.
You would need to vote on that.
So we should probably include it. If we do, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. So seeing no other comments, I'll make a motion. So at the last meeting, we determined that this was a type one action, so. I'll make a motion for a negative declaration or seeker review based on the following. Uh the impact on land, proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. Uh yes, but it'll have a minimal impact. Impact on geological features, the proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique. Or unusual landforms on the site. Uh no. Impacts on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. Uh no. Or small impact. Uh impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. Uh no. Impact on flooding, the proposed action may result in development on lands subject to flooding. No. Impact on air, the proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source, uh no. Impact on plants and animals, the proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna, uh no. Impact on agricultural resources, the proposed action may impact agricultural resources, no. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns. Between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. Uh no. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. Uh no. Impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities. Or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. No. Impact on critical environmental areas, the proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area, uh no. Impact on transportation, the proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. Uh no or small impact. Impact on energy, the proposed action may result in an increase in the use of. Uh in the use of any form of energy, uh no or small impact. Impact on noise, odor and light, the proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors or outdoor lighting. Uh no or small impact. Impact on human health, the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Uh no or small impact. Consistency with community plans, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. Uh this. Proposal is in. Accordance with. Uh adopted land use plans, so it'll have no or small impact. Consistency with community character, the proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character, uh no. So based on those items, I'll make a motion for a negative declaration. Seconded by Kelly, all in favor? All right, that's four in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Conditioned on the. Variants being approved by the zoning board. Sorry, I'm gonna go back. The first motion is a motion for a two percent reduction.
Increase in lot coverage.
A two percent increase in lot coverage, allowing uh two percent increase in lot coverage. So seconded by Kelly, all in favor? All right, so that's four in favor, zero opposed.
Uh one more thing, I don't remember if this was discussed, but if the applicant needs more than a year to complete the project, which I believe they do. Now would be the time to ask for an extended approval.
All right, how long do you guys need to complete the project?
So this project is proposed in two phases. Um we expect the first phase to be completed, I believe, in twenty twenty-six. And I think phase number two is twenty twenty-nine.
Can we do a extension that far out?
That's up to you. I, it's never been done. Since I've been here.
I guess, can you make, can we? Do an extension at a later date from a previously approved? It's, for example, if we did a two-year, which got us to August or July of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Through phase one probably. And then revisited it.
They can, yeah, they can come back anytime before the approval expires and ask for an extension at that time. They can explain at that time why they need more time.
I'm just, I'm thinking the the street may look different, there may be different. Other things in development and uh different people on the commission as well at that point, so. That's probably how we should do it.
Great. So say again, when phase one would be done, when?
Two thousand twenty-six.
Twenty-six, so a two-year. Approval time and then you'd come back for the extension before you went into phase two?
Um yeah, we could, we could do that. I- i- is it the understanding that we would only? Um the question would be whether any changes have occurred. Um. That would. Be, that would stand in the way of an extension. I I guess, I guess the question is when we come back for an extension. I'm wondering what would the criteria be because the project's already been approved?
So I think the question here is, if I'm understanding it right. With doing sort of a two-step where you're approving part one. Essentially, and then they're gonna have to come back for part two. Is it that they're gonna just come back and basically be like, hey, we want the extension, can you approve the extension with nothing else? Are they gonna have to go through the full? Site plan review again with consideration of everything? Does it? Frankly, if the whole thing is just to make them come back for an extension. It doesn't really make sense to have them come back.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um. Obviously, you know, I've been through things that have stages. If you get through stage one, you might have some things that you want to change by stage two. So it would just seem logic that logical, I I don't know, it seems like it's hard to. Say for stage two because there might be some things that I would, is there a way for them to not have to go through the whole thing? But make the changes? So I don't want to create extra work for you guys, but.
What's, the process for extensions in the past has been. The applicant comes in or even just submits something in writing and staff reads it. Explaining why the extension is needed.
Okay.
It. You, in the past, you haven't done a full new site plan review. You would do site plan modification review if there are changes, but if there are no changes, they can just ask for it. We put it on other business. And then you guys will.
Um a third possible option is basically to say we're approving it for two years and. We're gonna administratively let the planning department extend it for the second phase, assuming that there's no changes.
Yeah.
And then if there are changes, then we can look at having the applicant back to look at that phase two.
Let's do it that way then.
Sounds good to me.
Yes, thank you.
Beautiful. All right, so you need that uh conditional or separate motion?
You would just in- include that in your motion to approve.
Okay.
That you're approving it for. Uh two years. Um. And that. Any further extension can be granted by the planning department, provided there are no modifications to the site plan.
Great. All right, so I'll make the motion that the requirements. Requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Um. Subject to the variance being. Approved by the zoning board. And. I'll include uh that this includes a two-year approval. And that at the end of that two years, uh an extension can be applied for directly with the planning department. Uh assuming no changes have been made.
Yeah.
And and the two percent increase in lot coverage?
Yeah, we already did that as a separate motion, but. Yep. All right. Seconded by Kelly, all in favor? All right, four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And was that for both the site plan and special use permit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We're excited to get this off the ground.
All right. Good luck. All right, so that'll bring us to our next public hearing. This is for the applicant First Ward Action Council. Uh project address is two seventy-four Front Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of an existing residential building into a multi-unit dwelling. With four one-bedroom units in the C one service commercial district.
Good evening, um. This is the second time we're here, as you mentioned uh before that these projects would be. And um. First on the docket is two seventy-four. I don't know if I mentioned before when I was here that. These are three projects that. Three sites out of the same project that have to come before the planning commission. There's actually ten sites that are being uh. Renovated, but only three of them had to come to the uh planning commission. I don't know if I made that clear last time or not. Um. Two seventy-four. Uh. We um we did a landscape plan. Last time we didn't have a landscape plan, so uh we provided that uh for you guys this time. Um just a freshener for this project. Uh there's. Remodeling the house and they're adding a two hundred and forty-two square foot addition. Um they're putting parking in the back. Six spaces. Four of them will be used for two seventy-four. And uh two will be used for two seventy-six. Um. You asked about a trash plan last time. And they will just be, for this project, um they'll just be taking the cans to the curb. We also talked last time um about a possible easement. Needed for the project. And uh. I talked to the owner or the applicant and uh, you know, he reminded me that these are both. Both these sites will be owned by the same entity. Um so he was kind of questioning whether that easement would be needed or not. Um. So just throwing that out to you guys, obviously, if you determine that it is. They'll have to take care of it, but um. And I think that's it for two seventy-four.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest that you. It doesn't really make sense to require an easement, especially if the plan is to hold the properties long term. Um. You know, certainly if there was. A sale or something of one or both the properties, the owner might want to reconsider that, but that's not really a consideration for the board.
Okay.
I'm also not sure if you can grant an easement to yourself.
Okay.
And he's been doing these uh for quite a while in the in the city. Um he's got several uh of these projects under his belt and he's. He's holding the properties on all of them.
Gotcha. All right, yeah, I think we're, the kind of was mostly just uh. Just are you aware, you know? Uh is it gonna be a problem in the future? Uh but that's great, so we won't include that in our review at all. Uh all right, uh any questions or concerns, comments before we open the public hearing?
You know, just the trash, as always, you know, it's just, we don't, we really, I hate the, I hate it just going out to the curb. It's just my personal opinion, doesn't seem like it works very well.
Gotcha. This is, how many apartments is this? This is.
Four, four units.
So four units, each unit, the person in them takes their trash out.
Yes, it's pretty much like every other residential property in the city of Binghamton.
Okay. All right. Well, let's do this. Let's open the public hearing, see if there's anybody to speak about the project. Um so this is the public hearing for. The applicant First Ward Action Council, the project address is two seventy-four Front Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of an existing residential building into a multi-unit dwelling with four one-bedroom units. In the C one service commercial district. Uh if there's anyone here who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. And Tito, did we receive any letters about this project? All right, so no letters received, no one approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. All right. Let's see. I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion and we'll see, see what happens with it. Um. Yep, I got it. All right, so. At our last mini- meeting, we determined that this was a unlisted action under seeker. So I'll make a motion for a negative declaration based on the following. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Uh no or small impact. Would the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No or small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small impact. Would the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways? Uh no or small impact. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Uh no. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Uh no or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Uh no or small impact. Would the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No or small impact. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Uh no. So based on those items, I'll make a motion for a negative declaration for secret review. Seconded by Mario, all in favor? All right, so that's four in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Seconded by Kyle, all in favor? All right, so that's four in favor, zero opposed. All right, uh one thing, I don't think we had you guys say your name and address for our records at the beginning, so just to.
You know, I was, I thought I did, but I was gonna apologize because I didn't give Architect a chance to introduce herself, but. Mark Parker, uh Keystone Associates, uh fifty-eight Exchange Street.
Jamie Berkeley-Harchin, Keystone Associates, fifty-eight Exchange Street.
Great. Thank you. All right, so that'll take us to our next seeker determination for the First Ward Ward Action Council. This project is two forty-nine to two fifty-one Front Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a multi-unit dwelling with four one-bedroom units and an ancillary parking area in the R three. Multi-unit dwelling district. Welcome back.
I will, thank you. Um. Just as a reminder, this is a new building on the site. Fifteen hundred and twenty square foot. Um. Four. Two, two one bedroom? Two one bedroom, two studio apartments, uh. Two, one bedroom, two studio apartments in this building. We have. Four spaces for the two fifty-one and we're providing two spaces. For the adjacent property of two forty-nine. The changes for this. Also, we submitted a landscape plan. We have added a. Can corral for the trash. At the back of the unit. In that location. And we were just discussing today. That we're questioning whether this is a good location for the gazebo in the playground. So. As as of earlier today. It was discussed that we would look for another one of our sites to put those and not put it on this site. And I didn't have time to, you know, change anything.
There shouldn't be any problem, right, Tito? We just.
No, you can just, if you vote to approve, you can approve. Subject to a revised site plan being submitted to the planning department. With the with the noted changes. Assuming you're okay, you're all okay with the changes.
I would be just removing the gazebo and the playground. Okay. I think last time we also talked about an easement or combining the properties. And where they would rather do an easement. Rather than combining the properties. So I think I think these are into different owners, right?
They're they're both owned by first ward action council, but under different entities, so.
All right.
So it'd be easier to do an easement.
Yeah, easily doing this. If you think it's necessary. I think that's all the changes that I can think of at this time.
All right. Any questions, comments? Before we open a public hearing? All right.
So is the building just on the one parcel or does it cross over both parcels?
The building is just on one parcel. The property line is the thicker line that goes down the driveway.
Yeah, it's it's the parking that's at issue with the easement. The driveway and the parking lot.
I mean, obviously with doing the approval and having two separate owners of the two parcels. The concern with the parking piece is that. Theoretically, they could sell off the one parcel and all of a sudden you have this other parcel with no parking for it.
A way to get to the parking. The parking itself is on the separate property. It's the it's the drive getting to the parking.
So is that that's the same issue, though, when they went to sell it, it would become a problem? As part of the sale that we wouldn't really need to get involved with?
I'd say this is a little bit different.
Okay.
Because like the with the other parcel. It looked like there was more of a shared driveway between the two buildings. And so, yeah, you might still have an issue with the parking there and everything, but again, because those two parcels are owned by the same owner. And there is this sort of shared driveway, you don't have any of the access issues that you would have here. Where all of a sudden, you know, the one parcel gets sold and you have no way. Theoretically, to get to the parking for this building. And you can't necessarily control what another owner is going to do. And I mean, the applicant sort of acknowledged and said that they be willing to get an easement, even if they're not interested in combining the parcels, which. Again, when you have the two separate owners, combine the parcels becomes a difficult. Actually not possible, but.
So this one would be easier because it's two separate entities to get an easement.
Yeah, so yeah, again, like with the other one, you can't. You can't grant an easement to yourself. Here because there's two different entities, even though they're. Not sort of separate totally, but they're identified as separate entities as corporate entities. Then you can do the easement between them.
Okay. And you're not opposed to doing whatever you have to do to get an easement?
We would rather do the easement than combining the properties, obviously, with the two different owners.
Okay. All right. That sounds great. All right, so let's open the public hearing. So this is the applicant first ward action council and the project address is two forty-nine to two fifty-one front street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a multi-unit dwelling with four one-bedroom units and an ancillary parking area in the R three multi-unit dwelling district. If there's anybody who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone.
We got a call from a Timothy Christian at two fifty-three, two fifty-three front street. He. Said that the proposed building won't fit and it seems to be that the lot is too small. The proposed building will be right up against his property. His tenants already have problems getting in and out of. I'm assuming the driveway at his property.
All right.
Is that is that the property to the north? So currently, I think there's an easement. You know, the property lines right down that driveway, and I think that's what they use. That's improving that, so putting the driveway over here away from his property. And setbacks. Required setbacks.
It is it is the property to the north.
Okay. Well, let's see, nobody else approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. All right, so then, do you want to address that comment? Your your building won't impact their driveway, right?
That's correct, yes. Our building meets the required setbacks and. In our opinion, it's an improvement of the current situation.
Okay. This sounds like maybe a misunderstanding of the plans. Okay. Any other questions or comments about this one? All right. Seeing none. At our last meeting, we determined that this was an unlisted action under seeker, so I'll make a motion for a negative declaration based on the following. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in use or intensity of use of land? No or small impact. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological architectural or aesthetic resources? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to the natural resources? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion flooding or drainage problems? No or small impact. And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. So based on those items, I'll make a negative declaration. All in favor? Or sorry. Seconded by Mario, all in favor? All right, four in favor, zero opposed. And. I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Contingent on the applicant's. Formalizing the easement for driveway access. In the future.
And is the gazebo staying or is that going?
Oh, yes, in contingent on the applicant submitting an updated site plan to the planning department when they've decided decided what's happening with the gazebo area. All right. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, that's four in favor, zero opposed. All right. Onto our next secret determination, sorry, a public hearing. So this is for the applicant first ward action council. Project address is forty-one Clinton Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a mixed-use building with three two-bedroom units, sixteen one-bedroom units. And two ground floor commercial spaces in the C four neighborhood condition, commercial district. Before we start, I do want to mention that Jerry Willard called me at work about a day or two after the last meeting. He was concerned about my comments about. I had said that I it felt a little bit like that building had maybe been repurposed from a different project and just shoehorned onto the site. I didn't mean it as an insult. I was just asking whether that was a possibility. He talked about their process at the first ward action council. He told me a lot about what they do and that in his opinion that that had not happened. And nothing too specific about this project that. Will affect my review in any way, but I just wanted to make it noted that he did contact me outside of this forum where he should have. Contacted me or talked about the project, so. So, all right, you're up, forty-one Clinton Street.
All right, so. Just let me get the let me get the right board. Reminder, this is seventy-six hundred square foot, three-story building. And the unit count did change.
I just wanted to clarify that we did change from three two-bedroom units to five two-bedroom units. It's five two-bedroom units, fourteen one-bedroom units.
All right.
Thank you. I didn't have that wrist when I sent to Tito.
Yeah, will that affect your parking count in any way?
Well, you know, as I mentioned before starting, this is, these are part of a bigger. Plan and they're they're looking to satisfy accessible needs, a certain number of accessible needs of apartments, units. And they added one here, made sense that this was the better place for and all all of the other sites that they did. So we ended up having to add another accessible parking space to accommodate that. We improved the entrance. On Murray Street. And one of the ways we did that is we we removed the sidewalk that. Wasn't really needed. Do you remember the there was a sidewalk? Had no purpose really, other than it was there. So we removed that so that we could improve that entrance and and it helped a little bit. Still a little. A little angle to it. And we also, I think I mentioned that we were going to do this on the last. Meeting and about the in and out Clinton Street. I think we had a one-way. There and I mentioned at the meeting that we were going to change that to two-way and and the new plans show that. And we also provided a landscape plan for for this project.
And back to your question about the parking, the the unit count mix, I do not believe changes the total number of parking spaces required. So the only the only change made to the parking is the addition of the accessible spaces. And therefore, reduction of total number.
Yeah, I think twenty-three is required and we're providing twenty-one. And as a reminder, we have the four percent block coverage. Also.
Okay. So. As part of the request, are you asking for the parking reduction that we have the ability to allow?
Yes.
Okay.
And and the and the. Coverage, block coverage. From seventy percent to seventy-four percent.
Just a couple of things that. I can confirm that the parking requirement did not change with the unit count mix. But on the site plan, I see twenty spaces. Just want to make sure you get the number right when you're granting the waiver if you do. So twenty-three spaces are required. The site plan shows twenty.
Thank you.
It looks like last month there was noted that if the accessible changes made, it would knock it down to twenty as well, so. Think that's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, let's do this on this one. Let's open the public hearing first. So this is the public hearing for the applicant first ward action council. Project address is forty-one Clinton Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a mixed-use building with three two-bedroom, sorry. With five two-bedroom units and fourteen one-bedroom units. And two ground floor commercial spaces in the C four neighborhood commercial district. If there's anyone who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. All right, and we do have somebody for this one, so if you don't mind.
Nick, while he's coming down, I just want to note this project relies on a rezoning for the larger area around it. And so the planning commission cannot vote on this until that rezoning goes through. We'll schedule to go through by now, but it requires a vote from city council and so that hasn't happened yet. So. I don't know, you I think you could close the public hearing. They're not going to be introducing any new information.
You know, I have a question. I know you mentioned that to me earlier. Thank you. I just was thinking earlier today. Then also hearing some conditional approvals here, could that be a conditional approval? For this project as well, would help the project, you know, our next step is to go to the funding and. And securing these approvals is is important.
It's up to the commission. We would say it can be done, but that's if you want to.
Okay.
Yeah, basically to clarify what would happen is it's conditioned upon that rezoning happening. So obviously, if that rezoning doesn't happen, that approval isn't effective. So like the city won't be issuing any permits or anything until or unless that rezoning takes place.
Okay. Great. Welcome.
Hi, Ray Shupa, one seventy-one Murray Street. The site where this is. Proposed has been vacant for a very long time. It is nice to hear that the first ward action council is looking to build. Pretty much an apartment building. My question was in regards to the parking, is there going to be plenty of off-street parking for the tenants? And for the mixed-use building that they have proposed? And it sounds like there is. I'm just wondering, I can't quite tell from the print. But. How do you want, how do you enter and exit the parking lot? Is it going to be from Murray Street and Clinton? Or is it just going to be one? One entrance, one exit. Also, considering the fact that this is such a large building, I was just wondering, are they going to have? Also, considering the fact that this is such a large building, I was just wondering, are they going to have a property manager or someone on site similar to what was proposed in one of the other buildings down, I believe farther one eighty one? Clinton Street, they had asked, someone had asked if there was going to be a manager and I'm wondering if that would be considered for this, for the spot as well. Um, other than that, I have no other questions other than I know the first ward action council has done quite a bit of work, obviously, in the first ward and has been a very good neighbor. And it looks like they're, they have a very good plan for this vacant site, which used to be the old Powell Building, which was a coal of a very large coal bin storage area, which was a really interesting when it, when it uh was demolished. It was all concrete and that was a, that was quite a, quite a task. Um, but in any case, I'll, I'll close in that and say that um it is nice to have this property finally developed. And it's nice to see that there, there is an interest here. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other? People want to speak about this particular project, forty one Clinton Street? And no letters submitted for this one?
Um, I'm just checking with Sal and uh if we got comments from the county on this yet. Sal, are you looking? Okay. So. Sorry to keep throwing stuff at you guys. We do not have comments from the county yet for this.
Okay.
And so that's another reason why it should be tabled in in my opinion.
All right, um, I think you guys can come back up here.
Uh, but to answer your question, we did not get any written comments.
Okay. All right, so no county comments yet?
When was the, when was this submitted?
I don't think the thirty days have lapsed is the issue, but I'll, I'll give you an exact date.
Yeah, it's our second, second month here.
There's a development from Sal and Patel. Not seeing the date on here, let's see, uh, May ninth. So pretty close to thirty days, but.
And we can't do conditional approval for that because we don't know what their comments are. Correct.
We, we do have, we, they do give us comments one department at a time. And we have comments from Broom County Public Works, but not the sort of consolidated comment package. And and the public works um found no significant uh impacts to county infrastructure. They did have this to say. Um, it's in MS four area and as such should adhere strictly to erosion and sedimentation control guidelines set forth by the DC. Designing construction should be coordinated with Norfolk Southern Railway and the applicant to ensure no conflicts exist with the proposed design. And to maintain a safe site during construction, no other apparent impacts.
But I, um, excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, I think this middle was April fifth.
Okay, the application?
Yeah.
Yeah, the two thirty nine was not sent to the county until May ninth.
So April fifth, May fifth, June fifth. It's been like sixty days.
Tito, are you saying it wasn't sent until May ninth because our last meeting was May seventh? And that was twenty eight days ago and May ninth was twenty six days ago?
No, it's, it's our department's error. It was sent basically less than thirty days ago.
Okay.
And so.
I, I just wasn't sure if it was because of the last meeting. Yep. And we, we just across the board can't approve it until we have those comments from the county.
Not to my knowledge, no. I mean, it's, it's likely that they're not going to find adverse impacts just based on what we've seen from their public works department. But we do need the comments from them. I do think it's, it makes things cleaner to table it with the, with the rezoning uh anyway.
All right.
But yeah, that's our, that's our stake, so we apologize.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're stuck on that one. Um, it'll be a quick review next month. We'll put you first on the list.
Uh, on the second part of the agenda, but I mean, I don't, it's up to the commission. I don't think the applicant even needs to come, you know, necessarily. There's no, no change, uh, unless the comments say something that the applicant needs to address.
Are we able to close the public hearing portion today too and it would just be the approval?
Uh, I would leave it open.
Okay.
To allow the comments to come in, what do you think?
Yeah, I would leave it open. Um, the big problem with the two thirty nine review is that if they came back with some sort of significant impact thing. Um, the, the vote required is majority plus one. And we don't have that tonight.
Got you. Okay. All right, listen to this. Um, so we'll leave the public hearing open. Is anybody have any concerns, questions about the project?
I guess just one, you had made a comment about removing a sidewalk and I just wanted to clarify that was an onsite. It wasn't the actual public sidewalk you were referring to, right?
Correct, it was an internal sidewalk that really didn't have no use.
I, I was sure that was what you meant, but just in case somebody heard they were removing a sidewalk, that was, that was all.
Yep. Um, okay, and there were a couple of comments made. Um, so off street parking. Not internal, there is some on Clinton Street and the side street for the commercial spaces if they needed that.
Yes, we did, we designated the proper number for the commercial space, so it would be the, the yeah, residential units that would take the reduction. The clients are typically.
Yeah, the, I mean, first word action councils, um, the tenants that they normally have, the reduction in parking hasn't typically been a problem.
Okay. Well, but once you have a commercial tenant on the first floor, there's ample parking on the street and in the parking lot. There's a, ultimately, there will be ample parking all the way around the building.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then just a reminder, because it was asked two way in both entrances, so Clinton Street and then also
Murray.
Murray Street.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. Both, both entrances will be two, two way in and out.
Okay, uh, and then do you know what the plan is for a property manager onsite?
Well, the first ward action council has an office on one sixty s, one sixty seven Clinton Street and they, they have staff that manages the, the properties. So if there's issues, they contact first word action and they take care of it.
Okay, so very responsive landlord.
Yes.
Okay.
One, I had one other, um, yeah. So it looks like Murray Street and Clinton Street directly on the property boundaries, both of those areas are no parking zones, so it would be are you referring to like the streets that are kitty corner when you say there's additional street parking? Or is there, I, I guess I don't know if that's planned to be changed at all, but that, that was just another clarification. It looked like those had no parking signs on them, so.
I, I believe you're correct, but there's no parking on Clinton Street. Um, but we are providing the required commercial parking onsite.
There, there's two hour parking um to the east uh by the dry cleaners there.
Okay.
And then there's some to the west uh around Tichner Place.
Yep, okay. Thank you. All right, well, it looks like we've come to the end of the road of what we can do tonight. But assuming there's no major comments from the two thirty nine review, it looks like everybody's in agreement with moving towards approval on the project, so. All right, since we can't vote tonight, I'll make a motion to table the project until our July meeting. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Uh, you mentioned that we don't have to necessarily come to the meeting. Um, is it any way that instead of waiting till the Nick, next meeting, if you get two thirty nine comments, they can be forwarded to us, we can address them. It obviously is the gentleman mentioned, if there's an issue, it meets the majority vote, then, then we'd come back and present, but.
Are you talking about a conditional approval or a special meeting?
So I, I think if I'm understanding right, once we get the two thirty nine comments back, if we could forward them to the applicant. The can could respond in writing in lieu of appearing before the board, assuming there's no nothing crazy in the two thirty nine comments, if that would be acceptable.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep, all right, great, and all right. The applicant may want me to come anyway, but I just wanted to, you know, set that.
All right, thank you. All right, onto our last public hearing. This is for the applicant Owen Bligh, project address is one sixty two Water Street. This is a site plan modification review for the modification of an existing ancillary parking area to add an additional five parking spaces in the C two downtown business district.
Welcome. Thank you. Uh, Owen Bligh, one eighty six State Street and as mentioned, I'm proposing to add five parking spaces in the existing parking lot at one sixty two Water Street. Uh, this proposal was first introduced at last month's meeting. Uh, there were a few pieces of feedback, I think mainly circling around greenery space and maintaining as much greenery space as possible. And so we slightly reconfigured the design of the parking lot to maintain the minimum or above the minimum threshold or requirement for greenery space coverage. Um, that would be the major change from, from last meeting.
All right, great. Any questions, comments before we open the public hearing? All right. So this is the public hearing for the applicant Owen Bligh, project address is one sixty two Water Street. Site plan modification review for the modification of an existing ancillary parking area to add an additional five parking spaces in the C two downtown business district. Uh, if there's anyone that would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. And any letters uh received about this project, Tito? No, all right. All right, seeing no one approaching the microphone, uh, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, anybody have any concerns, questions? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion right off. Uh, so we determined that this was an unlisted action, so I'll make a motion for a negative declaration for seeker. Based on the following, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character equality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action r- r- result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character equality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Uh, no, so based on that, motion for a negative declaration. Seconded by Kyle, all in favor? All right, that's four in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan modification review have been
Do we need to also approve the additional five percent? Cause I think it's ninety five percent instead of ninety, right?
You submitted documentation from your architect that you were not uh gonna be exceeding ninety five percent, right?
Yeah, that's correct. The uh, the variance that I'm uh trying to get approved is not the greenery space.
For drive aisle width.
It's the drive aisle width.
Yeah, correct, correct. So, so you would need to vote on whether or not you want to grant that lot coverage increase to ninety five percent. And then beyond that, if you vote to approve, it should be subject to the approval of the variance um for drive aisle width.
And, and just to add context there, the original design, excuse me, had the, the proper or the allowed drive aisle width. Uh, however, by adding more greenery space, we essentially shifted the lot down such that one or two of the adjacent spaces ended up with a slightly condensed drive aisle width. And so we basically valued larger greenery spaces and, you know, a foot or two shy for, for two spaces for drive aisle width. And we're hoping that gets approved as a, as a variance next week.
Okay. All right, excellent catch. So um I'll make a motion for approval of going to ninety seven point five, approximately ninety seven point five percent lot coverage, where ninety percent is the maximum allowed. Sorry, we only have the ability to go to ninety five percent?
Ninety five percent.
All right, so I'll make a motion to allow ninety five percent lot coverage for this project. Second by Kyle, all in favor? Four in favor, zero opposed. All right, and I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan modification review have been met. Uh, contingent on the applicant receiving the variance for drive aisle width. Second by Kyle, all in favor? Four in favor, zero opposed. All right, we should have put you first on the list. I'm sorry, you had to sit through.
If, if I had any feedback, that would be it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, so we skipped over secret determination for the applicant Eric Rundells at two twenty five Shenango Street. Uh, is anybody from two twenty five Shenango Street here to talk about the project? Uh, seeing none, seemed like too much was happening to talk about it without them and push it forward to a public hearing. If everyone's okay, we just, just table it and then wait till they come. All right, so I make a motion to table the two twenty five Shenango Street project until our July meeting. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, four in favor, zero opposed. All right, on to other business. I think Tito has something to add to other business today.
Yeah, we got a uh amendment to the zoning ordinance that was submitted by uh council president Hadassam Matavetsky and councilman Robert Kavanaugh. Um, and it is, the purpose or the goal is to make social services as a land use permitted by right in the I one urban business park district. Um, so, so that zoning amendment would change that land use from, from one that requires a special use permit to one that does not, um, and is permitted by right. And what that means for the planning commission is if, if a social services use is proposed in that I one district. Um, and it's under a certain uh size threshold, it would be reviewed administratively by planning staff. If it's above that size threshold, it would still have to come to the planning commission, but the planning commission But the planning commission. Would have to. Sort of contain their review to site plan issues. And would not. Be able to consider. Whether or not the use is appropriate. At that location. And that would apply to. Uh, a- any proposed use or any application. That could be considered social services. So what you would, what you would be doing, this was referred by city council, so you would be either. Um, voting to recommend approval of the amendment. Voting to recommend approval with changes or voting to recommend. Denial of the proposed amendment.
Uh, can you define social services, what, what is included, like what types of things? It seems like a broad category, what are the types of things that are included in? Social services?
I'm looking for the definition to give you the full text, but social, anything that's like a human service agency. Um. Uh, any kind of. Uh. Guidance, counseling, therapy, group social activity, remedial instruction, self-help, support. Uh. Rehab, this alcohol and drug rehab facilities. Uh, methadone facility. Alright, okay, here we go. Organizations that provide support services for specific populations or the community at large also includes facilities that provide transient housing related to social service programs. This definition shall include the following uses, alcohol or drug rehabilitation facility, community residential facility, human service agency and methadone facility. So it's, it's pretty broad, it, it could be. Uh, you know, uh. Catholic charities office, it could be. Um. Uh, mothers and babies office. It could be. Um, for example, the M H E S. Um. Mental Health Crisis Center with social services. Um. Salvation Army. Is social services. Uh. Halfway Houses, things of that nature, i- it's pretty broad.
And could, sorry, could you say again, so by, allowed by use makes it so that when we review the plans? We no longer could say. That the use would change the. The character of the neighborhood or?
Right, you would have to focus on site plan issues, landscaping, parking, traffic, lighting. And. Operational things about how that use in particular would affect the surrounding area. Uh, would not be sort of part of the scope of what you'd be reviewing. Because it, because that use is permitted by right. You wouldn't be able to sort of deny that. That use.
Would, would this have a public hearing component to it as well?
Uh, special use permits require a public hearing by default. Site plan review does not always require a public hearing, if it's a type two action.
Okay.
Um, and there's no new construction.
Okay.
The, the public hearing could in theory be waived.
Uh, this is, this is a big one though, this is a big ticket item here, and especially, I, I'm not comfortable voting without the rest of the. Such a small group of us here today, doesn't.
That's true.
Doesn't really feel, I know this is. This feels awkward to me to.
Do you know when we got the referral from city council?
Uh. When did that happen?
Cause it, so. The planning commission has to vote on it within forty-five days of the referral. And so depending on when that referral happened, um. Yeah, it's either. Vote on it tonight or try and schedule a special business meeting on it. Um. In order to meet that forty-five day referral. Timeline, I'm just, I'm not sure, I don't know if you know when.
I, I'm looking up the, uh, work session agendas, so.
Do, does our recommendation have any actual weight with the? Application, like? They could ignore it if they wanted to, right?
They could ignore it, yeah.
Oh, can we, can we accept, uh, comments from? The. Oh. Yeah, how many industrial districts do we have?
So this is for the I one industrial district. And there's only one in the city, which is. Predominantly the Charles Street Business Park. But it also includes fifteen Charles. And some, some properties north of the Charles Street Business Park.
Oh, I see, so it's a relatively small.
It's like thirty-something acres, uh.
Well, it's not too small though. Thirty acres.
It, it feels like a, a workaround though for the, um. For the warming station, you know what I mean, so it just, I know that that's. That was such a controversial thing, I don't, i- if we can find out whether it's forty-five days, I, I'd like to not vote on this today.
I, I think, I think also we received the notice about it pretty. Pretty shortly, uh, today before the meeting too, so.
Yeah.
Didn't have a ton of time to review it before we got it.
Okay, alright, so it appeared. On the May twentieth. Agenda. Uh. So the July meeting would be. Let's see. I think that's forty-three days. It's still I second. And my math is right. One, two, three. Forty-two. Three, forty-four, I think. Think the fourth of July. Would be forty-five days. I don't know for a fact that a motion was made at that meeting to refer it to. The, the planning commission, um. I was only asked today to put it on the agenda, um. So I don't know when that clock officially started.
Yeah, let me.
But we can go with May twentieth, just to be safe for.
Well, I can take a look and see if they actually voted to refer it over, it's just gonna take a minute, cause I'll have to look and see. The recording from the meeting, because it doesn't look like the minutes are up yet.
Okay. Alright, well while they do that. Anybody have any other business they want to talk about? So July, we have to, kind of have to keep the meeting on the second.
Yeah.
Looking maybe because of this also, but. Those are the only days you guys are both still in town, July second. Okay. Mario, are you around July second? Alright, Mario will be here. Joe is still, he won't be available, it looked like through the summer, but. Chris is usually pretty good. And Manny. I don't know about Manny, but.
Uh, I'll send that a message on base camp, just to.
Okay.
Get an idea. Uh, I will not be here.
Tito will not be here.
Sadly.
Well, i- i- is there any, if it was only showed up on the agenda on the twentieth? Is there any way it would have been submitted earlier than the twentieth?
I don't think so, there was a planning committee meeting before that, but. There was no mention of a referral made at that. At that.
Okay.
I mean, I mentioned to them that they had to do it, but they did not. Take any sort of action in, in terms of referring it to.
So the earliest the time clock could run out would be the fourth of July. So as long as we do our meeting on July second, we're still within our window. And the only, the only possibility is that it could be even longer than. The fourth of July. So. I, I agree with Kelly, I'd like everybody else to be here. If that makes sense. Alright. Okay to table with them? Okay. Do we need to officially table it or just bring it back up at the next?
Uh, uh, I would make a motion to table.
Alright. Uh, motion to table the debate about the zoning. Uh, change. For the use change. Uh, second by Kelly, all in favor? Alright, four in favor, zero opposed? Alright. Um. Any other business? Nope, alright, motion to adjourn. By Mario. Second by Kelly, all in favor? Four in favor, zero opposed, alright, thank you everyone.